By diligence to the wire, not accident, it's an irony. It's to the Republic, which is Savannah, one raised on her daughter. Even the those that were literally, that was a call.
Go call.
Mr. Blanton, Mr. Ryaninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Here. Thanks. Totally anxious in the public? The only thing, could you guys put a newsletter together that's on, it's on there? Yes. Anything else you can tell us? Nothing, Mark?
No.
Nothing you can run? Nothing?
I have a lot.
All right, we just go straight into the board. Mr. Blanton?
Oh, I got a few things. First of all, we brought this up in the past, we was discussing on record and bringing up, you know. I meant to make you copy this. Andy Massey is president of the Frigidales Athletics Association. So, we brought up about the sponsorship, the Sonics and the West Park. And they would be roughly three by five. People oversee all this for us. And then, something hundred fifty dollars per sign. He was charged for every guy that's been, between a thousand and a year, he was a fifty dollars person. Now, we'd split between TRC, AKA, and the township. On the Frigidales Athletics Association side. The cost of offset, paid for them, paid for the field, driving, trying to charge them. So. I'm going to bring up some discussion before the motion for it. We've talked about this before, I think it's a great idea. To let it work for the township and I believe. And for those like the next.
I, I, I just, yeah, we did break, it was brought up and generally spoke in vague really, just to clarify. So, you're saying it would be a thousand dollars altogether to sponsor for one year? Eight hundred fifty of that would go towards the sponsorship, a hundred and fifty would go towards the cost to produce the sign. And all that would be handled through the Athletic Association where they'd have a sign produced and.
Yeah, no, we're on my part.
Okay.
What's the township? What was that?
The four twenty five.
It's ten.
Correct. Four hundred forty five.
And would that go into, Cindy, would that go into like?
It would go into general fund. It would go in the general fund. We, we could put that towards the community fund money if you guys want.
Well, true.
Because then that easily, that'd be able to come out to the West Park or to help whatever they need, or the park or the fields and then concerts or. So, that's probably what I recommend is, well, it definitely has to be a general fund, but with, with that line.
With the.
And anybody could, could, I mean, could do this, this spread would be open though. But. Would, would, in like September, like January, January, I think.
Correct.
I would think, so you'd have to run for a year, if you're running.
Yeah, that's very small, and I think that makes sense. And you would like to make sense. So, but I think we would have a script. So, I, I, who maintains it? You can maintain, I mean, but you get flooding and it'll be. Well, this is going to be a load work. So, also, Solaris, going, we got image in that storm, we're trying to put stormy falls. This building, the school, it got, it was a windstorm, you know, and it got ripped off. Put that back and he wants to rent that out for two thousand a year. And to this law. So, that'll be the same thing, would be, that'd be whatever the sign costs to put up there. Then, what it costs to get to have the two thousand rest of this. You got any questions, Cindy? PRCA, they're going to construction area also, right? Like, you got anything else to do? I'm going to make a motion, we go ahead and allow TRC AKA to head up the, I guess, the sign project, the sign sponsorship, membership of West Park. And we'll make that motion.
Second.
Right, for Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Ryaninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Also, as Wavian said, October sixteenth, I have a meeting with Andy Massey, the guy I just mentioned, he's president of TRC AKA. J.J. Clark, which is our park's director and our park maintenance. Then, the new baseball coach that I just found out about. And we have a new athletic director that I have no idea. So, we are needing to have Westfield to go over what's expected out of this. PRCA and the school and the township, they're working together for the new set of people. So, that's how we work through the system.
Are things changing or is the relationship or changing or?
No, it's not changing. Okay, we're just going to go over, just make sure everybody's on the same page. What we're expecting, what they're expecting to do and what township is expecting to do. Just so everybody knows what each other is expecting of each other. The other, the other thing I have to say is, we've been on the air here. Mark, you want to come up and talk about this real quick? And then I'll turn you down.
Yeah. This is regarding to the G-attend.
Correct, with Terry Con?
Yeah, so.
Right.
The, the project that we've been hired to do with the, so I developed it, right now, we're going through. Engineering, structural engineering, and probably data side of this thing. Terms of the site, we can present in the other thing. Part of, part of the proposal I addressed the, the rest of these on. It was, tried to hire Terry Con because I had Craig Davis with Terry Con when he's been dealing with that in the past. History, one of his son, he very needs the four boards, basically to understand what you got. So, what he needs to do is he comes out with a spot track cover and digs it up and then gives us a vote fair. That way, I can give the structure, so that he understands what that vote fair is. So, here's the proposal I sent, he sent Craig safe, we played it, and I sent it to Dan, so. For forty five hundred dollars.
And I have it, and, and I apologize, Ken, for not getting the copies, but our past experience was for forty five hundred dollars, the major grid of the university.
How many boards are you going to do for? How deep?
He said, he said, it's all in there.
Yeah, but same.
So, I, I'll just go check it out, but where do we see on tip? We got any? Do you have any updates on tip?
No, I didn't know, I was going to tell you about the thirty ninety yesterday, John, or John Minter. I will say this on record. I asked our attorney, Alex Hune, to reach out to John, he went and asked three weeks ago. And he did that. And then, with Alex, he was saying that would be, our, that would be extended to landing the experience. It was, he would be reassured, Alex would be hopefully licensed to be burning, which he realized that it was. They only got notified, you know, thank you. So, but that was, the information we relayed back. The same thing, John, is, John Minter's just tax, tax adjustment for the, for the state department of taxation, they could do this.
But that, that same individual was the one who said in May or June, that it would be September thirtieth, basically had this exact update that. You know, that it was by September thirtieth. We really don't have anything new, it's just continuing to say the same update, but it's.
Yeah.
It's worth working on, and we're hoping we still have anything, right? And we still don't have any confirmation, right?
Oh, that's, that's correct. But Alex, Alex asked them that they needed assistance, that they provided assistance, but they couldn't do it. That he would. He was so good to have it done, that's why I said to him, so, I emailed him. I didn't hear back from him, so, that's what I had to say. When I was going to talk about that supplement tonight, but if we're getting up now, I'll write us forty five hundred dollars.
Well, i- it's not the forty five hundred dollars, it's that we're doing forty five hundred dollars, we're doing forty thousand, three thousand, five thousand. We've got a hundred thousand for roundabouts.
She read you that.
Right, and as we said, we all agreed that, that we talked about how that was different because it was a safety issue.
I really don't, I, I never said.
Well, the state, the state said that they prefer roundabouts because they believe that it's a safety issue. Or the rest of the story, in their ways, that they, they believe that it's a safety issue. That that's one of the criteria of why they were pushing roundabouts, but then, I think it was in July, we all said we wouldn't. Push forward on some of these projects until we get the verification on the tip. And again, while it's promising, they appreciate your efforts and to keep on the, with the, the state, we try to get updates, but we still don't have any verification on. But it is.
Mark, maybe I'm looking. Fourteen, we have fourteen million in the, so, I don't think forty five hundred is going to.
So, nothing, well, my point is that, no, that's forty five hundred is not going to break the bank. It's, it's not going to, it's negligible, but it's still further moving the ball down, or it further committing us to this project, just like. Two weeks ago, we voted that it was better to, to move forward again. I just, I thought that midsummer, we had a lengthy discussion and said that everybody understood that it was probably best to hold off and wait until we saw had clarification. And confirmation on tip before and can all that send up there, so others say made the, emphasized that we would. It was a good idea to be responsible, we could hold off until we get clarification and it's. Every, every meeting now, it looks like we're bringing up more things, more things, more things that are moving us towards millions of dollars. That will, that eventually be the result of this project, so. I, I just don't understand what changed between. Yeah, June or July or whatever, whenever we were talking about this, and now, we're, we're continuing to inch further and further and further. Investing more time, more money, more energy.
Because it takes so long, that's why, it's forty five hundred dollars, it's not forty five thousand dollars.
What, what was the last, the request, was it two weeks ago? What it was.
If you're talking about the last word. Okay. No, I. You make it an exception. I'll be, I'll just go ahead and make a motion, all right, go ahead and put in forty five hundred dollars. Got a second? Aside, I need to find that back.
But you already reset that?
I said.
Hey, Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Ryaninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
He's, he's better on there.
Yeah.
Worked on.
I can say not mine too.
Could I? Something to discuss, so, so, we'll stay, we'll stay the bigger building and, well, I'll address it. But I don't have.
Mike?
Um, this was discussed a couple of times. And this was a proposal. From Mike Taylor, so the two weeks, two, both two weeks ago and four weeks ago. We discussed updating these microphones that are used here in the boardroom. One being trustee Renner wasn't able to make it, but trustee Blanton spoke positively and supportive of this, or Mike Taylor. I asked him to put together a proposal and he sent me this and said, oh, this is our best, cheapest option to get the boardroom mics operational again. It comes at a cost of five thousand five hundred dollars. We've had several complaints saying that the quality of the video isn't supported the best and that particularly the sound. And so, this is something that we're trying to be transparent and which I want to be. Make sure that people can hear us on videos that we take care of, so, you know, for discussion and for making a motion. There's no discussion.
I, I remember the conversation.
So, the, the, he had a quote for, I think, twenty seven thousand dollars and twenty-ish, and twenty seven thousand dollars would basically outfit the entire room, where they go in the ceiling. Do all kinds of things with surround sound, and you had, pick up, you had mics in the ceiling that would pick up the sound, and so. Versus twenty seven thousand dollars, five thousand, fifty five hundred is much more reasonable, and so, trustee Blanton. And we brought up those two options, so, basically said that she thought that it was a better route to go with the, the cheaper and more efficient, simpler way, so. Once you indicated that, and I asked Mr. Taylor to come back with this.
That's fine, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I mean, if you don't want to. Well, that, that's for a capital, that's for a program, or that's for a project that is eventually going to be millions of dollars, which you said will be millions of dollars. I'm there. Well, previously, you and I had discussed, and I said ballpark, what are we looking at? You said it's going to be millions. I, I have no idea what we're looking at, but this is to allow our residents to understand here, the meetings. Your proposal is a capital project that is recreational and trying to have concerts and playgrounds, which is all great and fantastic. Something we take pride in, but it's not the basic to what we do as far as operation for our, our township. This is something that residents expect. What, like an amphitheater, or a playset, or a ballpark, are nice things to have, they're nice amenities, they're nice things. This is directly as far as how we operate as a township, so that's just my take.
But it's still fifty five hundred dollars.
Can I ask a question?
About to close, you want to put the video to online?
So, what, what I'm going to do is, I talked to Mike Taylor, or IT Network Administrator, and I found out recently that we used to have a YouTube channel.
Yes, we did.
And I did not know that. So, when I found that out, I made a point and I said that first, I'm going to propose that we update these microphones. And then, once the microphones are updated, which I'm asking now, you can do that by our next meeting, which will be in two weeks. But then I'm going to make a motion in front of the board, and, and not that even needs a motion, but just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And as we start utilizing our YouTube channel again. So, it is put on our website right now, but I want to be transparent with our, with our, that they can actually hear and see. I don't want to put up a lower quality, lesser quality video. And so, I'm hoping to fix the mics, so that if we put something like that up, they're not going, you know, what is that squinting, trying to hear what's being said? So, I think that people should have the option to sit at home if they want to, and I appreciate those that show up in person and ask to participate, that's important part of this process. But I have nothing high, and I think it would be great to have people that can sit there and watch the videos and be more informed and not rely on some other source of accounting.
So, again, there's quality of video that we're taking?
No, it's, it's the, it's the sound, it's the sound.
Do we have the quality?
The quality is decent, but the, the sound is what's really lacking, that's all, and if you can't. So, that, that's why I think.
It's because I want this, or this.
And then, once we approve this, then we can utilize other resources and let people hear and see what, what happens here.
I need a point of discussion, I just made this motion, Mike, go ahead and.
Okay, I will make a motion that we get it approved. The proposal from Tri-State Visual for five thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Blanton? What? Oh, I think you moved it.
I, I.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I'll, I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Blanton? Mr. Ryaninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we've received our executive summary final HRI, strategic H R, and there was some questions on that. Each of them received that in that packet. And I think I've gotten a chance to see that, they specifically made seven high-profile recommendations of things that we need to upgrade or improve as far as each of our processes. Again, that's seven high-profile recommendations, they made ten medium-profile recommendations, now eleven lower-profile recommendations. And they also supplied us with several suggested forms that we can use that will improve our, our H R operation. So, I personally think that was money well spent and that, so, so indicated that she got a chance to look at it. And I think that these are things that we can take and utilize, just.
Especially with the new administrator. When we get a new, that's, a lot of it is the new administrator.
Well, again, I, I think it's just things that, you know, we, we, we can improve and do better at, and be more, whatever. But I, I agree that that would be a great place for them to start with that, so. Want to make sure that everyone knows that there's plenty of discussions about the roundabout, but officially, we did hear from the county engineer for specifically that the reapplication was, was submitted. That is in the process. So, so our fiscal officer was being used, the point person, but really it's for the entire township, and that we can't, we can't, we're back on that. I attended a North Bend Open House for Village North Bend, in which they had. A design for a North Bend Riverfront Park, and they had their civil engineer with Renneries and, and so that was nice. It was, I stopped down there for about forty five minutes, and then Doug Sammons, their mayor, asked me to stick around and say hello or something at the, at least, but. They are proposing bringing the museum over there to have an interactive center, interactive center. They are also looking at an amphitheater, they have several different amenities and things with their park, but that would be down on the river, the property that they now have. Two updates on nuisance complaints specifically at twenty five twenty nine and twenty five thirty seven Rittenhouse. That has been, we sent a letter and asked them to clean it up, this is next to a construction project that's going on up there, and they have, so, that is taken care of. And then, that we were, that we were waiting ever. That the. We heard from the Public Health Department, and there is progress being made on, on that, so. We were, are paying attention and listening to some of these letters that are pointing out that we continue to receive a lot of nuisance complaints. The David Cruder Memorial Scholarship Fund Pancake Breakfast is October twenty ninth, I know. We've mentioned that a lot here because they're, it's a great organization, it's such, it was, Pat Murray and Cruder, very active in the community, so I can, I must attend that. Again, that's October twenty ninth, it's a Sunday. With preparation there. Uh, we, we had renewed interest in having a memorial tree and or a memorial placard put up in some of our parks, so I want to thank the stay. She has worked on that project, and if anyone is interested in having a tree planted and or in gravestone. Put up at either community center, walking trail, West Park, or Buffalo, the new Buffalo Ridge Park, please let us know. We have, she, the stay has reached out and got all the close scan, so it is four hundred dollars. To have a tree planted, twenty five dollars, well, that includes the water bag, or a hundred dollars for a great one, pretty extreme, so. Make sure that residents know that that's the issue. The stay has been working with the representative that handles all of our copiers, loading luggage, and so. Right now, we have three different accounts because of our different departments, and I'd like to see if we can consolidate that so that we're just more efficient, so. And if anything, if you guys have questions, let me know, but I'm not ready to do that. And otherwise, it looks like Assistant Chief Straight is here, are you? I was going to ask you about the fire chief. Search, I know we communicated the email on Monday, I don't know if you want to wait or if you're going to be. Discussing anything here, we should do that now as part of my remarks, but I'm very interested. Two weeks ago, so two weeks ago, that I asked, that we talked after the meeting, and I asked, and we. Supported in general, moving forward with approving that, if we were in a position to approve it. You said that we weren't ready yet to approve that, and that's, so I don't know if we're placed to.
I had a doctor's night.
I, I think, I, I've got good rapport with the staff. Yeah, we've heard that too. The other two trustees, I believe. And we're working on that. And there's a company that they're interested in. Do a job search for a chief. It's all part of our process of chiefs and captains and things like that. And we do have comments on that tonight. So, we'll bring, we can bring that up shortly.
So, so that was emailed, I don't.
Yeah, I sent it out today, so today, and Robbie sent it to me yesterday. It's, it's just a job description of the.
We're going to say job.
Basically, taken off of, of, of.
Previous.
Chief Lacy, they cut it down to what they didn't have available.
Yeah, some, and. Added, omit, stuff, I mean, just things that were in there, just kind of, it's, it's still need to be formatted, things like that, I think that we had.
Need to be formatted and put on, on, on cash at literally.
Like the email update, she was all involved, the salary range, and the bills, going over the pile, so. I ran it down on the jump, visiting.
Well, I, I just searched the Google job posting for fire chiefs, I saw a very nice one from Rain, City of Rain, Ohio, looked good. I'm, well, my email, try to refresh it. Um, look good. I'm, well, my email, try to refresh it to make sure that I didn't. See anything in my inbox from Rusty Renninger or anything like this topic. So, um. Yeah, but since today I'll get you a copy. That's okay. We're we're bringing up and discussing here.
Yeah, here's that. Here's the postings here. Copy of the posting. You don't have it. Get you a copy of it. Copy of the posting. We get your copy that after the meeting.
I mean, what what is, I guess, what's the plan as a for executive just next? I I just.
I know it is is give you a chance to look it over. We've got two weeks to look it over. You guys can look over, make any changes you want to make. If you feel like should be made, take your copy of the rings. And compare it and see what they had or we don't have and. And uh, he's wanting to change his group and make a change to a decision. We have a meeting. Well, yeah, if if you could resend that, because I haven't, I'm looking at it right now.
So uh, that's. All for now, I'm sure.
Okay, uh, in in September minute, we were told there'd be a meeting on the bar house. And the outstanding uh. Purchase or or work orders. Well, we were told by Ronnie here, Ronnie Lee. Uh, was told by Phil that that's turned over to Mari Township in April. I asked Ryan to get a copy of who signed off on on the final. Job because there's still a bunch outstanding. Bunch of maintenance order on the punch list and one of them has to do with the fuel systems. Never had a drop of fuel on it yet. Hasn't been tested yet. Pressure tested. Uh, I don't know, you kind of ordered a few oil. You have to order enough to, you don't need to order order the entire eighteen hundred gallons.
Just wanting enough to calibrate.
Enough to calibrate, check release, never been done yet. There's also a list that Ryan has that was sent to him after the meeting, April. I don't know when it was. Gonna get it still. Thought maybe so might have been here tonight. Um, anyhow, we need to meet with them to find out. They're saying it's already been turned over for us. We need to know who signed off on the final order.
What I can say is that I did not sign it. You know, that Mr. Miller, Ron Miller, just talked to me literally as I was wanting to take care of. Uh, or to say that, uh, that Bill with the yard said that. That they feel like they're done. So I got that update. Ten seconds, you know, locked in here. And I will say that it's been complicated because you, as you pointed out, that that was in April. Our fire chief was on the. Is that right? So our time fire chief was really at the forefront of that type of project.
We still have a project manager, but we're talking to it. That's okay. Uh, Cindy, do we have a number yet for the uh garbage levy?
A number?
Is there a number on it? It's got it on a ballot.
Oh, um, probably. I, we got that long time now.
Are we? I haven't seen the number.
Yeah, we have the issue, but thank, I don't, I don't.
I knew the issue went in. Uh, just remind residents, it could be a half a mil increase. I think it was two point two five to two point seven. Uh, police contract, I'm sure everybody got the letter from Mr. Ludo. And uh. They want to take our 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 portion of this contract. From five hundred sixty-four thousand now to six hundred eighty-five thousand next year. And of course, the same, same uh. Letter says that they're gonna drop North Bend from a hundred and twelve down to eighty-seven next year. They're gonna drop Cleed down to two, from two eighty-two down to two sixty-five. And uh. Or, yeah, I I I think that we, uh, we were saying they're gonna negotiate with Addison. They're gonna negotiate with the Far West. I think the board should send a letter and tell them if we continue to pay for one car as long as our levee supports it. And then after you settle with Far West, which has no contract cars. Then we decide how we want to participate. Still have our resident pay, pay uh. Six hundred and eighty-five thousand next year. That's an increase of a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Then it goes up to eight hundred and twenty-two thousand following, ending out nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's right. Norland is that next year. They have to decide and and. I I think we ought to just go ahead and tell them we paid for one car or support one car and uh. And still eight, till they negotiate with Far West, Far West pays zero. And uh. And I think the number two guy, I'm sure the department lives in Far West. I I think he wanted to.
And we need to post this so the servants know.
Please. Yeah.
They need to know.
Yeah. There's there's no logic to the decrease in North Bend, a decrease in Cleed starting next year. No logic at all. Especially they're gonna increase ours a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. No logic.
It, we're bringing that up for a second. Um.
I'm bringing it up for, just so people know what we're contracts out. This gentleman here asks about almost every month. Where's the sheriff's contract? Quite frankly, I don't know if it's legal, we're even continuing to pay or not. We don't have a contract. I don't know how we pay without a contract, but we're doing it. Go ahead, Mike.
Here's my take, and I would like to send an email to the to Cleeds and to. North Bend. Um. The Chief Deputy said that he believes that the the township as a whole. These three full-time twenty-four hour cars uh to properly um. Cover uh this area. So that's the unincorporated areas uh as well as the three villages. Currently, the village of Addison has their own police department and according to Helen Kelly, covers about half of the ships. If we were to assume that we do need three altogether, then it only makes sense if Addison. Is going to expand their police department, um, because otherwise essentially we're supplementing. Their their coverage. So um, we need clarification from Helen Kelly and from the village of uh village of Addison. Frankly, that's up to them. We can't force them and order them. I want to they can decide if they're gonna have their own police department or not. But if they are going to have their own police department, they need to staff it twenty-four, seven, three, six, five. In which case we only need two cars because there are then three twenty-four hour car of law enforcement. Within Miami Township, who the abilities. If they are going to go a different route and enter the contract with. Then I could see how we might need two and a half to three cars to look at the entire. Um, so. You know, I I had started a draft, a draft just to get my thought together on this, but I think that. We need to press and say, we need clarification on what's going on with Addison.
Well, when we had our meeting, um, quite some time ago. That's what he's gonna do. He's gonna go out and reach out to Addison. What happened with Addison, our new chief, our new more part-time people. Don't only have us and disband their police department. I don't think so. I don't think they're gonna disband. They've got a stomach for the, for the, for the time and part-time base officers. So I think that's, I I was. Yeah, we go in that meeting and and a car, one car, one twenty-four hour car is five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Cleed, Cleed right now is 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 paying two hundred and eighty-two thousand. So that's a half a car. Okay, North Bend is paying a hundred and twelve. That's what a quarter of a car. So. We're paying for one whole car. Uh, we're paying five hundred and sixty-four thousand. Our resident, we've always done it. And we we take our car out, make a run into Addison. We don't have coverage in Miami, which means to me you're violating the contract. I mean. It meant just my thinking, because you're taking that car away that we're paying for. To be here, to be here, for them, for anybody else in the township. That they're paying that car to be available to them, to Addison, or it should be. There's emergency, no trouble. Routine calls, this is what's happening. Because they don't, they don't man their station around the clock. They can't man a station when they have a car, please. Somebody has to respond to Carl, calls in Cleveland. So I gotta control this while I've got this. The amount Jack stated, he one car to move township coverage to, you know, about the cat, uh, North Bend's paying. Eighty-seven thousand, well, this year is, they're paying a hundred and twelve this year and they won't be going down to eighty-seven. Now he was paying two hundred and eighty-two. And they are decreasing their amount next year, which ultimately is. But I think our proposal, the village should be back to Mr. Ludo, he should be. We will, I mean township will pay for one car, our revenue will uh support. And Cleed's passed and pays whatever he's proposing here, two hundred and sixty-five thousand for these, eight hundred and seven thousand for the then. We ask the township to pick up for the uh county, county, the rest for that. And let's move forward and get a contract. So I'm gonna get two cars, twenty-four, seven, and I think it's sufficient. I I think he's right. He probably needs a car, but you know what? You know, he he can only get what? You can support it, and if you can't support it, you can't support it. They're they're giving the car to the Far West for nothing. They have forever. What I mean, uh. And it it's just, it's not.
Cars are actually out at night in Far West.
Please.
Do you know how many cars are physically out there in the Far West at night?
I couldn't say how many. There's a Far West, there's at least one.
One, right. There's a Far West, there was, I know.
Generally, when I'm out there, I see two or three just patrolling and I was just out there this weekend.
I I don't know. I'm gonna say, I'm like, do we physically know how to go?
I know there's one assigned for sure and I don't know if the county can afford it or sheriff's. But I I think that's a great proposal.
I do too.
Bar, they can say they can't afford it. County pick up the rest. We'll pick up our car. We got two cars, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And that's, and maybe down the road, if things change, you you can get that third car if you want. On this side of the river. But you know, you got coverage on the other side of the river. And they're not paying for it. And and is that fair to you guys?
Well, that's not fair. A lot's not fair. I mean, I agree, but I know some of those guys live out there. So I know for a fact. What happens is, towards the end of their shift, they start heading that way. And I get it. I I know that's what happens. But it's not fair. But does that car come into, so is the two cars right for us? Because. If there's an emergency, that third car is gonna come from the Far West. If there is an, now, it's far. Here's the other issue. They they are so down on employees right now. That's a whole nother issue. You don't even have enough people to cover their shifts. Period. So this is probably a complete new argument, because I don't know that they have enough ship people to cover the shifts they have. The county is just desperate for, I mean, they're. Uh, correct. I mean, we're down on people in general. So. Paying for their car that we're probably never gonna see anybody may be a new argument right now. And maybe what we do is just get this contract. So we have the two cars. Let's relook at this in a year, you know, or whatever.
We've always, we've always said Cleed and North Bend could pay for one car together. We pay for one car and they give you two cars in the township. You know, to include incorporated area, the unincorporated area. And then uh. Uh, they can go ahead and work with with Far West. I mean, try to get them on board to buy profit.
So argue what the Far West is doing. We have to figure ours out, because I've been coming here since, to meetings. Like since like February, and this has been an argument every time, just like the tip money.
It's day of the eighteenth of September.
I know. I'm just saying, this is just then a continued thing. I think the two cars is.
Well, and that's what we would do then. We'd send it back and tell them we'll pay for our one car and they need to work with Cleed, North Bend, which has nothing to do with it.
Please, North Bend are not gonna pay.
I mean, I I was down there and I spoke with several of the council members in North Bend and um. You know, then their eighty-seven thousand or whatever it is. And that that's, they think that it's kind of pushing it based on the number of. They get. So uh, if if Cleed is somewhere in the two hundreds zone, there's no way that they're going to do that. What one thought I had was that to accentify some of these posts to come to the table was then to require. Addison to and and the the county to, not required, can't require any. Request that Addison and the county give us. Some firm indication of whether how there's gonna be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. An officer there or not, um, or how that's going to happen. The other thing is that. Uh, the issue that I hear is fairness as far as the the Far West. My proposal was going to be that essentially we get a twelve-hour dis- twelve-hour car discount. So for half of a of a twenty-four hour car, so long as Crossbeam, Harrison and Whitewater. Haven't met met at least eight, paying for at least fifty percent of what services they're being provided. With a plan that they'll pay a hundred percent within five years. If that, so, so basically, we we get twelve hours worth of of coverage. Until those three townships are paying at least half of whatever services they're providing. And with a plan of pay, because they keep, the county is asking us to put together a five-year plan. To phase in and ramp up. By us paying for what they're proposing.
Where we could get that at? This is only takes out the twenty-twenty-six, which is her, her last proposal. It's not a five-year plan. But it's, well, in the final proposal, that'd be one point nine million dollars.
I think that shows what, at one point they mentioned a five-year.
Well, anyhow, that's 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 my recommendation. You guys, you know, think about it. Okay, it's good. That's right. Tony left, it's it's passed its test and it's physical. We will go into the schedule with the lieutenant. Already approved. Five, right, the firefighter. And then uh, I want to thank the Westside Chiefs. Uh, we had, they had your first meeting. It's the pandemic and the, we headed down our station. Uh, Miss Minor Rose, the super facility, see what assets we had for train. We had all the chiefs in the West Side show up and I think it was pretty clear what is. And the final thing is, is this promotion of the captain position. Uh. This has been sitting there now for a while. We did exit interviews, which is one of the things the H R person told. The report said should be getting done, weren't getting done. We did an exit interview on the last firefighter we left this. That his concern wasn't money, because he's gonna lose sixty cents on the hour by going to where he went. His concern was continuation of of uh senior officers and who's in charge. That was Mr. Feldman, who's had that exit interview that resulted with all their micros. So uh, the 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 captain's position has been posted, it's been. Gone through, uh, some, there was some question about making an interim position so the new chief could pick his own. Can't do that, but there's no interim position in the contract uh for any of our fires. No reason you can do the chief as an interim chief because he's not affected by a contract. So I'd like to make a motion that the three people who. Passed all reformers to be moved into the the captain position, get moved into it. On a permanent basis, so they can start working on replacing the lieutenant position. So we can get some some stability in our, our uh. Authority and our chain of command.
We have the authority to make a position interim, like a captain at a high level.
Yeah, he's, you have, if if, but, because they're not covered by a contract, right? The authority department is covered by a contract.
But but the captains would. But, but the captains, which is what you're proposing.
Is covered in contract, there's a contract office that works under the contract, right, Robbie? Contract positions.
So our, our, our attorney, Alex, you said that we could do it, or leave, that we could do it interim or a permanent. Uh, promotion if that, if that was considered, so you're saying.
I'm saying, I could draw. And, and I don't understand what the interim position is gonna give you. If, if I was one of these three guys who carried this department for the last six months, he told me, well, we're gonna wait and see if you're good enough. I'll tell you what to do with it. Anyhow, that's my, that's my proposal.
That this deserves to be discussed, this is kind of a big issue, anything we can say.
Been out there for months.
And, and it's, this is, is this the first time that it's being moved?
And Alex has said that you don't want the permanent position for these three individuals. You want an interim, Alex has said that. So you, you wouldn't support it, that's probably never brought it up. But it needs.
I would appreciate it if you'd let me speak for myself.
Same.
I, I, I get plenty discussions with Alex as far as the, what the best approach, approach is on this, and as usual, I discuss. Business reasons, and it's not to say that I don't want these three individuals, I said that I think that a complete, a fire chief. Should be involved in the process in evaluating, uh, the, the whole command structure. And, and that, then, again, I've said that many times, I said, they should be part of. Do we need three captains, do we need two captains, do we need a, a, a time commander, a different chief, a, how many lieutenants, what should the structure be? All of these things, this isn't, once again, you're trying to make this personal with these three individuals, I think these three individuals are fantastic and do a great job. That doesn't mean we should just throw out the whole process and, and not have the fire chief be involved in this. I, we just talked about how I was prepared, I actually proposed. That we post the fire chief position two weeks to stagger it and have it go, or get handled with. The process to hire a new administrator, so I said, that I thought two weeks after we posted. The job for an administrator, we should fire, post a job for the fire chief. Um, we knew that on July the third. The last chance agreement was signed and finalized with Chief Lacy, three months ago, we knew. That we were going to need a new fire chief. We're now, three months later, I asked about a last meeting, I'm asking about it now. You said there's a, an email, there's no email, I, 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 I would, like, I've been pushing. To get a fire chief in place so that they can be part of this process. Now it seems like you're saying, well, we can't wait. Well, I don't wanna wait, I, I didn't wanna wait, I've been trying to push this forward to, to move things along so that they could be a part of this, now you said we don't have time, well. If we would have moved faster on it, they, we, we, we can have time.
And why do we need three captains? We need, for three days, or three shifts, three, three, three lieutenants?
Yes.
There'll be lieutenant, and how many people do you have working in our truck? For, for, for place?
Three, preferably four.
So we're gonna have a captain and lieutenant each year?
No, no, well, you're gonna have. If you count by three, there's nine, binary you gotta cover.
Right. The captain will be in charge of the firehouses.
Well, captains, just to say, captains will be up here, outline stations sixty eight, sixty nine, and have a lieutenant. Talked about supervision, supervision.
I understand that.
At everywhere, so. You really essentially end up with three captains and six lieutenants, which is.
I didn't want.
Yeah, yeah. So you wouldn't have like a captain and a lieutenant in the same house, unless somebody picked another ship.
So if our chief resigned, why are we three months out without chief?
It's a lot of issues, because there's issues about going out for a chief, staying internally. Internally, we didn't think we had anybody really physically qualified to, to do the job.
Mm-huh.
And, um. Uh, and if you go outside, then you get to bring somebody in, and there'll be nobody here. You got at some point trust to people you got.
No, I, I agree, but we need to, I mean, but we, I, I'm just, I'm just asking, like, if. If we didn't have the head person, why wasn't that our main, why don't we get that? Regardless, we've already, we've already decided that we have to go outside, so we're gonna have to bring someone in, he's gonna have to get along. So I'm just asking, like, why we didn't get this done? Why three months?
Well, it maybe could have been done, part of my fault, I was out for a bit, I had some surgery done. I had my surgery scheduled, and then, uh, uh, there was some delay as, as far as county side qualifications. Some delay of, uh. You wanted an interim. Captains and stuff like that, and we went to all the other departments. Nobody did interim captains, lieutenants. Uh, we didn't really go outside for captains and lieutenants, we got captains, weren't captains. Who were qualified within the department, let them work on getting it as lieutenants. And could we know the outside guy and the head guy can probably be from the outside, because we just don't have it.
That's okay, I mean, change is good, bring someone in is okay, but is it, is it, is it, are we rushing everything now? Like, I don't think anything should be rushed.
These, these, these three guys who are lieutenants have run, actually done captains jobs for quite some time.
Okay.
Uh, she's just getting more out, we're having to bring him in to work some shifts. Make up, make sure we got coverage of an officer. This guarantee is all for coverage from every shift.
Here's, here's my issue, is that Trusty Renninger is, is saying that they checked with other departments and that most of the other departments got interrobed. Um, promotions. Well, most of the other departments, I don't know any of them around here, have removed their fire chief. This scenario that just played out the last six months. And, and without a chief for the last. Uh, right, six, seven, seven months at this point, right? And they have, had a very, um, solid. Uh, structure in place, and so there wasn't any need to, they had a, uh, succession plan, they had, they rooming each other. And knew how they were going to promote, you know, from within. We have a very different situation here, as apples and oranges, and so to compare us with, you know, some of these other neighboring departments, it's just completely unfair. We're in untreated territory, and I think that, just like we said, that we would like to have an administrator in place. To have some input into the fire chief, hiring, the fire chief should have some. Uh, input into the structure, uh, uh, that we're gonna put in place as far as management. And, and I, I don't know why, when we lasted this long, we could wait a short, just a little.
My other question is.
What is?
Whatever you're gonna do, you know, if you offend the three lieutenants, are they gonna go outside of our township for your jobs?
I've had very good discussions with them, and, uh, well. I, I, I feel like promoting them on an interim basis, regardless of how prescribed by my colleague. Is that, um, they would still see that as a, a positive promotion. That, um, they then, uh, can show in the case their ability in that role. And then.
So you've had a conversation?
Yeah, I, last year. And, and so I think that it would be, and, and there's, there's no agenda here, regardless of whether anyone's trying to. Put that perception out here. Um, the, the, what I'm doing is where. If you told me, uh, this is, we're gonna talk about the senior center, or the maintenance department, or whatever else. If you're trying to put middle managers and upper, upper middle managers in any department. You would want to have the head of the department involved, again, this isn't, this isn't about, that that just makes sense. You know, from a, a, an HR standpoint, from an operating standpoint.
I understand.
So that's what I agree with now, this is about them, this is about how we're going to operate.
I just want to make sure. I, 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 I would say, I haven't got saved in this, sure, and, and that's Europe and.
It is.
Europe and, you know, true, that's, that's. Chief was a sure recommendation, with no to three lieutenants captain.
I would, I would, as far as that's.
And the, the guy who did the exit interview said that, that's the reason, he, he says, he doesn't think he's gonna be the boss next week. Cause he's worried he'd cause. So we have in our fire bunch of them, for this promotion, it's not contract or captain. As far as the brain is involved, I don't believe, you should say whether. They should be promoted or not, for the next, for the, for the twenty seven years. I, and, Sydney, it's in our budget, I mean, you know, captains and.
And, and the lieutenants, the interim lieutenants for those were additional.
Yeah, they gave us, what was it, it was very minimum, which I was.
Twelve dollars a day for the, for the captain. It was, oh, that's a day.
It was like three thousand for the rest of the year when you gave it to me.
Yeah.
And I was absolutely, I thought it was gonna be a lot more, so.
Everybody was promoting that, I think there was a hundred and four days left, and everybody was promoting that day, which wouldn't be the case. On it, so our, our captains already paid ten space, so if you bumped it up, it was additional twelve dollars per day.
Twelve dollars. So, you know, it, it's motions been made, has everyone seen this? I made the motion to go ahead and pass this, we're going. All right, outside.
To be a permanent and not intermittent.
Probably all certain, okay.
Right position.
Um, Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Renninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I will say, no, but I would say if it was interim, I would absolutely say yes, because I believe that these three individuals are deserving, and. Again, this is not about them, it's about the process, and I think that they deserve to be promoted to interim. And then, the, um, chief should, should be.
Okay, Washington, through.
I just want to say something just to vote it for already.
Please?
I just want to say something, I will say, probably against some belief, whatever. It's, having been in a first responder family my entire life, I do think you go the right way, okay? You are gonna bring someone in who will learn how to work with them, okay? And hopefully that's part of the process for interviewing that you guys do is with these new captains, because your department's been through hell and back. And I really hope whoever comes in does, is able to work with them. But I know my family would have responded at this point probably the same way your officer that just left. I know my dad is a former policeman would have said, I'm out, I am done, this is a joke. My uncle was a retired fireman, and would have said, I'm out, this is a joke, my husband's retired policeman said, I'm out, this is a joke. So I think doing it this way, I just hope that these new captains. Have some discussion with this new chief that they all work together.
And I will say that they will win their six months of coverage.
Correct, if it's not working, it's not working.
Push that down by the chief.
Correct.
Yeah.
If it's not working, it's not working, if they give out now.
Hopefully, so, is your, is your provision, if it doesn't work, we got yours in that position. So, all right, at four thirty, we have to break. We have a, uh, interview with, uh. Individual who applied for the administrator's job, and we lost out on him last night. We did the interview on Zoom, ran out of time on the Zoom, so. Uh, we agreed to let him come back in at four thirty on Zoom meeting. But just so you all understand, we're, we're going into executive session.
And just as an update on that, we, um, the teaching K R, that they now received a total of two hundred and seventy seven applicants. Um, and, uh, our, our board had a special meeting yesterday, and that did, uh, virtual news with, um. Several candidates, like Trusty Renninger said, uh, with the, for technical difficulties, uh, today, so. Um, it's, we far exceeded our expectations as far as applicants.
Did they do a committee for this, or you want the company to help you find this?
Trusty did, they just.
I'd actually like, so these are initial screening, uh, interviews, uh, that's actually a good point.
Oh, yeah, I.
I don't remember when that was, maybe July, mid-July or so, but. We discussed in this meeting, in front of, in this, one of our open meetings, that we would include the public, um, and, uh, to be a part of that, so. Um, yeah, thanks for, I forgot about that, but I appreciate. Um, and, and so, you know, I, I would love to include three, four other individuals. Um, that could be part of, they obviously wouldn't have a vote, but they certainly have input.
For the final?
To, uh, uh, for the second, second round of the, of course, and. Alex, for, you feel supported with that or not?
I, I, I think you should have a committee outside. Just let me see who's coming in.
Couple, I agree.
Maybe one from each trustee, or maybe two from the board, or where you want to. My recommendation would be. So we keep it forward, that's, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to watch this process. But he had trouble trying to get all this guy to contribute. But I would say, I'm not opposed to, one or two. A lack of work. One or two, that's, should be sufficient.
What if you guys see, maybe you guys will be unanimous on someone that you care. Maybe you'll be unanimous, and if you guys are, maybe it's more if there is. Maybe you guys will be all pretty much unanimous.
How many hours do you expect the administration? Please, how many hours do you expect the administration? Most of the time. Well, I, 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 I.
Forty hours.
An hour, an hour.
Forty hours.
I just, you can burn somebody out really quick.
That's most townships, most of the townships around us.
Okay, uh.
It'll be three plus.
Don't mind.
Spring for township, green township.
Bigger township, some, rain township.
Or, or pretty soon.
Bottom up, I'm just worried about.
Hold on, just, just, hold on. Hold on. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session. For, uh, contracts and, uh, personnel.
He has second. Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Renninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Yeah. Turning out of executive session, uh, Sydney, be your role call.
Mr. Blanton?
Here.
Mr. Renninger?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here. Okay, there's a couple of items left over. One of them, I'll bring it up in the meeting, and the other one is it, uh. Robbie sent us this thing for a purchase of mattresses, and one purchased eight mattresses. Uh, for twenty seven hundred ninety two dollars. Uh, they budgeted thirty two hundred. Out of the tip, was in the twenty twenty three budget. So, really, I don't know if we need approval on that, Sydney.
Yeah, you still need to bring it up at the meeting, yes.
Cause it's already been approved, it's in January.
That was just the budget, I mean, it was, but we're still gonna prove it at the meeting as an item.
Okay. Eight mattresses, Sam, Sam, twelve, twenty seven ninety two, eleven thirty two hundred.
That's true.
Become the cookie ball.
All right, is someone seconded?
Danny, Danny seconded it.
All right, Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Renninger?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, so I had.
I have one thing, so we got RFQs that we're doing for Monday, East Miami River Road in Buffalo Ridge Park. Um, we had Choice One Engineering submitted, and Baron Becker, we sent the six companies, we got two back. And I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Baron Becker, so we can move forward with planning and design.
All right, Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Renninger?
Yes.
And Mr. Robinson?
If we're not staying, I think Baron Becker did a great job, I just, uh, I'm trying to look at them, but I understand, I trust you, Blanton.
Hey, is there anything else?
One thing, uh, do we know anymore about getting a water tap for the deepwater?
We do, I will tell you. There's, there are three things that work, so, just got it this afternoon before I walk into the. Ten nine hundred, it's forty one thousand dollars, but twenty, that was what they submitted back. Three or four years ago, and we get to move on, so much, you know, that's when Paul and I went talking this morning. And we had asked them to agree to let them come across, and use that as a building station to pay them. So that was our alternative for forty two thousand, so now it's forty one thousand, twenty percent increase. Since it's been four or five years ago, then it's. So Ronnie, what did him tell me to do? Ronnie's going to go see the gentleman out in Miami. To see his setup and try to see what. Uh, how that's set up and what he thinks that would cost us if we could go that route. Um, also, I got a review of the estimate. I didn't have a chance to review it. It was, it was hard to find to see if there's, like, things we can cut out. Ronnie said a credit card reader was in there because that's got to be, there's thousands. If we could cut that out, we could get it down to maybe fifteen thousand or something. Um, but I can't see spending forty-one thousand. They can drive three or four more minutes and pick up water. Also, that is, uh. I got Ronnie checking with Queens and took out some water felling spaces there to see if it's still in the ground where. We can, I'm going to, I was going to go down and open the meeting and ask them on the record. If they would lease, lease that to us. We tried this here for a few years ago and I said no. So go back again before we try to dish out thousands of dollars to see if we can get them to agree to. Five-year, dollar-a-year contract. We failed and make it up people and get that back. So that would be a lot cheaper than forty-two thousand. Then we would just do a code for the residents of their community. And Ron and I don't remember tonight. So there's, so we got those three things.
Where do we fill our fire trucks at? Off a hydrant, right off a hydrant at the station. Uh, on scene, most of the time if you're there, we're seeing, or if we're training, they'll be here. We might run across the street, but it's all there by business. Now, we, we may talk about office, it's down and in, who knows that we have.
Chief, how, how is the production still going? You can do that in the, in the 20s?
Uh, I can, when we do.
I would like to give it on the number. I think it's a good deal to choose.
So I, I had something real quick. I could study just one second.
Wait, please, Mr. Renninger, you had your time.
I had even stood up here. And then I just want to say, um. Last week you guys approved, when we were buying that Medvall, we had approved twenty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred, so I could allocate different funds. One of my guys did some phone calling and did some stuff and he actually got it for twenty-eight hundred. So he saved a thousand dollars. Which was, so we see like a, this area. So we're almost looking for ways to save money. I said, I asked Tom, we fixed a jar for sixteen dollars and stuff like that. So we're, we're working. I always hate this, coming asking from my office. I do, I say.
That's crazy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Because we'll hear it, uh, on the next meeting.
I, I will. I just want to. But everybody's heard it on.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Mr. Renninger?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.